Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting for August 3, 2023. I'll call this meeting to order. And with that, Mike will lead us in our prayer and Tim with our pledge. Stand, please.
Let's pray. Dear my Father, we just thank you today for the rain we've got. Father God, just thank you for our freedom being here to assemble. Father God, just continue to be with us as we do the town's business. Father God, just continue to be with our firefighters and our police and our first responders as they take care of our town and be with our workers as they provide a beautiful place for us to live. Father, just again, go with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us in all we do. In Christ's name. Amen.
Please face the flag. The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, Mike and Tim. Our next item is citizens' comments. Okay, then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the July 6, 2023 meeting. Jeff, are the meeting minutes in order?
They're in order.
Okay. Commission, have you had a chance to review it? And do we have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Mike. Do I have a second?
Second.
Couple seconds. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minutes of the July 6, 2023 meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The minutes are approved. We're now on to old business. And Kevin, my understanding is Agenda Item 1 has been requested a deferral?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, we would have to entertain a motion to defer or not to defer, whatever the commission should desire. So with that, I'll open the floor up to see if we have a motion.
I move to defer.
I have a motion to defer. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to defer. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the deferral signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. This motion is deferred. We are now on to new business. Our first item is annexation zoning and plan of service request. Matt Huff, 6554 and 6588 Lee Road, annexation and PRD zoning request.
Yes, this is a request on Lee Road. It's two parcels of land totaling 34.48 acres. Currently zoned RM within Rutherford County. It does adjoin the current town limits on the north side, so it is contiguous. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and PRD, which is the Quinn Farms PRD, which is directly north in town, and RM in Rutherford County. The land use plan would support medium density, single-family residential in this area. Lee Road is designated as a collector on the major thoroughfare plan, so right-of-way would be required to be dedicated as a part of this development. This requested PRD is for 100 single-family lots. As a part of this request, staff would recommend the annexation of the existing right-of-way of Lee Road from Montgomery Way to the westernmost edge of Map 51, Parcel 5. That's a little over 5,800 feet. This would bring this into the town's jurisdiction as we look at improvements or anything along that road. It would give us that authority. The required minimum fire flow is 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. We had a few comments still to look at here. We did recommend a traffic study be submitted. Any improvements recommended by the study must be completed by the developer. We did recommend at a minimum that a left-turn lane into the site at the main entrance on Lee Road should be considered. Comment number eight was regarding the updating the materials. The first couple pages on your, the top of your stack do reflect the revised architectural elevations and materials list, and so that has been addressed and can be removed from our list. Comments nine and 10 were from CUD. They did indicate that the existing infrastructure is not adequate to meet fire flow, and so obviously that's something that still needs to be worked through. I do believe that the developer has submitted a request for will-serv letter from them. Has not received an answer yet, so they don't know exactly what is necessary to, or upgrades that might need to be made for fire flow to be met here. Again, the package on the top of your desk tonight is, this is the first item. It is just one access off of Lee Road. There's not a lot of road frontage there, but they do have sub streets to the north, east, and west to the vacant tracks on all three sides there. It's fairly consistent with what we have seen recently with the single-family PRDs. And the applicant did, they have, they do want to receive feedback from this commission. Any questions, comments that you all have? But they have requested upon that, after that discussion, they do want to be deferred a month. There's some issues they're trying to work through on some, on their side. I'm sure, one of those being that fire flow issue. So they have requested it to be deferred for one month. But they do want to receive feedback from the commission if you have, again, any comments or questions.
Okay.
That's what I got.
All right, well, let's start there with any questions that the commission may have concerning this project.
Question. I noticed that you're requiring a traffic study.
Correct.
I think as we've learned, an individual traffic study does not necessarily capture the entire picture. In reference to left-turn lanes, the dilemma is going to be while this individual development might not require a left-turn lane, if there's a minor stop at this development, and the next development, and the next development, you wind up with, you know, traffic gridlock. Is it possible to either strongly recommend or require a left-turn lane?
Yeah, that was our, our recommendation was that minimum that we would need to look at that. And that may be all that the traffic study really indicates needs to be done. It's 100 lots. It's kind of barely at the threshold where one would be required under our ordinance. But we know there's a lot of development on Lee Road, and we wanted to, we felt like it was appropriate to have a traffic study for this particular development. And it may be that it only ends up being the turn lane. Our recommendation was even if the traffic study doesn't say we need a turn lane, that we need to have, we need to have a turn lane here because of the very item you're talking about. If there's multiple developments along Lee Road, as you continue to get more, you know, we're going to need to look at that on these developments across the whole.
As a matter of policy, can we require a left-turn lane?
Yes, you can require. That's not an issue.
Well, we just, we just required that on, on a similar, very similar project on the same roadway, did we not?
Yes.
And in addition to that, I think at council level, they asked for the traffic study as well to, to study the overall impact on.
Right.
Good question.
The parcel to the east of this, have we seen it already? And it's that extent it's going to be developed as well?
No, that parcel to the east is not, it's not in the town. It's kind of the northernmost parcel within these two parcels. It's kind of, this shows kind of the parcel boundaries.
Is the old road?
That track and the parcel to the east was up for consideration for annexation. They withdrew that request.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just, you know, kind of looking back through there, you know, I noticed as far as setbacks and amenities that are included meet what we require, especially with what we now have in front of us.
Yes.
So there's no issue from your perspective as far as that goes?
No.
Can you talk to us a little bit more just about the, the fire flow? What?
Yeah, it's, they're, they're not, they don't meet it currently. They do have an 8-inch water line in front of that, so the fairly significant water line, but, but not, it does not have, I think it's 600 gallons a minute or something like that. I mean, I think is all they've got. As far as what needs to be done to correct that issue, they've got to work through that with CUD.
That's what I was going to say. That's a CUD work through, correct?
It is. I do know from a topography standpoint, we were concerned that it may even get below like a 500 gallon a minute threshold as you go up the hill, so to speak, without any sort of upgrades. So certainly something that has to be done. Before we can really move forward developing this property, it's something that's going to have to be figured out. And we got to know exactly what's going to have to be done, whatever that is.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sewer. Would that be city or?
Sewer is, yeah.
Hall of Branch, that extension?
Yes.
Tying to it? And then right now, there's only one road in and out of that.
There would only be the one way in and out this time, yeah. But you have the stubs, as I said, kind of northwest and east.
Right.
But currently, there would just be just the one way in and out.
The first one you had up, it shows where Gwyn Farms, the road in Gwyn Farms is offset to the west there.
Yeah, that road would, the topography on the Gwyn property goes up.
That's at the top of the hill.
At the top of the hill, so they, yeah, so.
When you're up there, you can see Lee Road.
Yeah. Eventually, of course, that road would extend and certainly if the properties to the west develop, you could connect this development into, to that road as well.
Or, or that east property.
Or the property east, if and when it develops, yes.
Anything else? So you guys helped me out. In summary, I think what we, you know, as far as what we're recommending as far as feedback is that we would want to see a left-turn lane. We know that they have to meet CUD requirements as far as working on their water issue that from a, from a home perspective, they're meeting what we require there. Is there anything else that, that the commission or staff can think about as far as answering any questions here?
For me, it's accessibility.
Okay.
That one lane in and out.
Okay.
If nothing develops around them, you've only got one way in and one way out for 100 homes. If something happens midway or in the back, you will not be able to get to anybody or get them out of that back area back there.
Okay. Anything else? All right, so that's the feedback. So again, as I understand it, they wanted to listen to our discussion as far as what our concerns were and anything that we offered in the way of suggestions. So we have that. And if there's nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to abstain from voting on this one, Chairman.
Okay.
Well, I would move to adopt with the addition of the requirement of the turn lane.
They've asked for a motion to defer.
Yeah, we, yeah, what we're, yeah.
I'm sorry.
And we, we expressed that. So what they're, what they've done is they've asked us to defer. So from our perspective, we would entertain a motion to either defer or not to defer this. So that's what we need to have on the, on the floor.
I would move to defer.
I have a motion to defer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second to defer. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. This motion is deferred. Okay, we are now on to preliminary plats.
We need to actually, you have the rezoning request.
Oh, okay.
On Rock Springs Road. That has been, also been requested to be deferred as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we were entertaining all that in that motion. So let's, let's make sure we get that correct.
Yeah, this is for the, for the next item under the rezoning request.
I'm sorry?
Next item, the rezoning request is what we also need to defer that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, yeah, let's see where I'm at now. Okay, so now the next item is a rezoning request. It's also been requested to defer in conjunction with the, the PRD zoning request. So if I could have a motion either to accept or not to accept a deferral.
I move to defer.
I have a motion to defer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to defer. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, so that rezoning request is deferred. Now we're ready for preliminary plats.
Right.
All right. So we have the courtyard at Stewart's Creek, Phase 1, Rocky Fork, Ammival Road. Owner, developer, Blakeney Partners, GP.
Yeah, this is the first phase of the courtyard at Stewart's Creek. This is 14 lots on 8.1 acres. It's in, again, the courtyard at Stewart's Creek PRD. We had several comments. Several of them are standard comments. We would want to keep comments 1 through 3, just the standard comments. Comment 4, Rocky Fork, Ammival Road is designated as a minor arterial on the major thoroughfare plan, and we'd ask them to show the right-of-way, and that is now shown on the, on the plans now. Number 5 is just against a standard comment regarding signage. We'll keep that. Number 6, they need to submit the road names and the 911 approval of those names. And they are working with 911 on that, but they do not have that yet. Number 7 is an informational comment for them regarding the minimum fire flow, which they do meet for residential purposes. However, that may be increased, the amenity center, depending on the capacity of the building. So we'll look at that when the site plan comes in. It may, depending on what the fire flow requirements are, they may have to sprinkle that building. But we'll look at that again when the site plan comes in. And that was primarily informational for, for the developer. Number 8, we'd ask them to show a sewer main to serve lots 8, 9, and 10. They have, what they would like to do, and that's something that they can work through with our utilities department, is to, because of some topo issues there, to serve those by private grinder pumps. So I probably will just add that to that comment and then let them work through that with the construction plans with our utilities department. We'd ask them to extend the sewer to the end of the road between Lot 2 and the clubhouse, and they've got that shown so we can remove comment number 9. And again, comments 10 and 11 are from CUD. Again, they have indicated there's not an issue of fire flow here with that one, but they did have some comments asking for some plans to be submitted. So we want to keep those two comments. So again, we can remove number 9, but with, and then we can take the last sentence off of number 4, but then with the other, those remaining comments would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin here? This is consistent with what we've previously?
It's consistent with the PRD approving, yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions?
Kevin, do you know if there was an existing house on this property?
I think so. I'm not 100% sure. Can't recall for sure.
And you said 8, 9, and 10, they were going to do something different with the sewer?
Yeah, they're going to do, they've asked for basically private grinder pumps.
Okay. Other questions? I'll entertain a motion then.
Motion to approve.
Approve the staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. This motion is approved. We are now on to final plats. Our first item is Cavers Court, 807 Rock Springs Road. Owner, developer, Syndicate Properties LLC.
Yeah, this is a parcel of land. Two, it's zoned R3. It's on 807 Rock Springs Road. There is, there are actually two existing houses on this property already. It's about 4.87 acres. The original plat that was submitted had three lots proposed. It has actually been changed. It's actually only two lots now. The plat is in front of you there. We had a few, kind of against standard comments regarding the, merely the first three items. Rock Springs Road is designated as a collector, and they are showing adequate right-of-way to be dedicated there. And the utilities department did ask for a set of plans, utility plans to be submitted. The number, comment number 6, fire department access will be required to both lots. Essentially, what, again, you have two houses there now, and you've got one, one house on the front that is to remain. The second house in the back is actually going to be removed and a new house constructed. They're currently served by one driveway, and so this will create two separate lots. It's still kind of utilizing the same, just one driveway. So the fire department did ask, or did require that both lots to be built, have a turnaround compliant with the fire code, access within 150 feet of the homes. And basically what they have, today they asked for like a 96-foot circumference or for the developer to provide, or request an alternative that they could review. They would be fine with that as well. But that was kind of the, the two alternatives they stated. The required minimum fire flow is 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI residual. They did add that if, if the homes do exceed the 3,600 square feet, that additional fire flow would be required because we don't know how large the house is going to be. That's why that was said, was stated. Number 8, there, there are extending sewer to serve Lot 2, and they do show that easement now. It, there is on the plat. That easement still has to be obtained. It's from an adjoining property owner. So comment number 8 I would change to that that, the easement must be obtained and recorded prior to recording of the plat. And then there would be, it will require against submitting all those utility plans to do that. Comment number 9 regarding some dimensions needing to be shown, that's been addressed and can be removed. Comment number 10 is really informational, but Lot 1 is going to remain utilizing the existing septic system. So since this subdivision does utilize, would be utilizing septic and not tying to public sewer, this plat must be reviewed by the planning commission and council based on the subdivision regulation. So the council will have to look at this next week. Comment number 11 regarding the date on the, the flood map has been addressed and can be removed. Comment number 12, the TVA easement does cross this property, and so anything within that TVA easement, they need to discuss, which is primarily just going to be for the private sewer service line. They'll need to discuss that with TVA, and if they have to get an easement from them, they can. Lot number 2, this is regarding, regarding the, for fire purposes, it will have to be either, and there is a note added to the plat regarding this, about that the house be sprinkled or a dedicated line ran to it. We'd ask them to show, there's a hydrant at the corner, and the reason it needs to be shown is because that's the hydrant that has adequate fire flow at the corner of Blue Springs Road and Rock Springs Road, and that has been shown. There were some numbering issues in the notes. That's been taken care of. So 14 and 15 can be removed. The plans that they submitted, they're actually, they came from the surveyor. They didn't print the scale, so we did ask them to correct that. So that needs to be done still. Couple additional things that, again, that the fire department asked for, just to show the driveway width. They just want to be sure they have adequate width if they have to come down that long driveway. And then that the, a fire hydrant does, and this is requirement of the subregs, that the fire hydrant is required to be within 500 feet of both homes. So the existing hydrant that's got adequate fire flow is not within 500 feet of the back house. No. There, there is a hydrant that's a little closer, but it's in a different pressure zone or something. It doesn't have adequate flow. And even it might be, because you're about 400 feet or so off the road for that second house, so you're quite a ways off. So actually over 400, lower 400 feet. There's still several comments. Several comments were addressed, but with those comments, we would recommend approval.
All right, so help me understand the, the fire hydrant issue. So for the first house, we're, we're good. And is that the hydrant that we're showing that's directly across from it? I guess if that's a blue hole.
Actually, that's the one that doesn't have flow. There's actually one kind of east of this site. There's one lot in between this. It's, you can kind of see it on the map in the top right corner. There's one, another large, you know, five acre or so tract, and then the very next road is, is Blue Springs Drive. And that's the hydrant that we're talking, that has adequate fire flow.
But it's how far away?
It's within 500 feet to the front, house in front.
But not?
But not. Because that house, the second house is, again, it's over 400 feet off the road.
Okay, I guess that's where I'm heading.
Yeah.
So Lot, Lot 2, the house, I guess that's where, where it's proposed to be, would be approximately 400.
Actually, no, that's the existing house. They're going to tear down that house and build a new house.
Yeah, and I guess, is it in the same building envelope there, or do we know at this point?
It would be in, it would be, it's a, it would be in, I'm sure, most likely. I don't know exactly. I'm sure it'd be built in kind of on the front side of that TVA easement, somewhere in there.
It'd have to be, I would think, right?
Otherwise, they're going to have to extend the driveway even further. So, yeah. But I don't know, it's going to necessarily go in the exact same place.
So somewhere between the TVA line and the, I guess, the beginning of Lot 2 there.
Right.
Okay. So the way to remedy Lot 2 would either require it to be sprinkled or have a dedicated line in order to, in order to meet our codes requirements?
Right.
Okay, so that's. Okay, so that's, that's the remedy?
Right.
Okay.
Other questions?
Chairman, I will not be participating in discussion or voting on this matter.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Kevin, do we define the driveway width yet?
No, that's something we'd asked for, we did not.
And does that have to be a pervious gravel, asphalt?
It would have to be asphalt or concrete, it would have to be something, which I think it's already, is in, already that state already.
But we don't know the width?
We don't know the width, right.
Question I've got on, on house one, lot one. It says that they will continue to leave it on the operating septic system.
Correct.
So in the event that system were to fail, what's their options?
Well, they would have to have a secondary site. Another septic site on their, on that lot would be one option. The other option would be, they would have to run sewer to, to them out.
Who would that fall upon?
That would fall on the owner of the property, yeah.
When you say an alternate site, if the tank itself failed, that's, they could still use the existing field lines, could they not?
Yeah, they could, if they just replaced the tank, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions?
Kevin, which one of these parcels, did we look at a commercial? Did we look at something commercial over there with the building in the back?
There is a church.
Church, that's what?
That was on the parcel directly to the west.
Yeah, and they had something in the back too.
They had, there's going to be two separate buildings, right.
Because of the narrowness of the lot.
Right.
Are we good then? I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Our next item is Living Springs, Section 2, Lot 55. Point Clear Drive. Owner/Developer Roy L. Waldron, trustee of the Waldron Tennessee Community Property Trust.
Yeah, this is a kind of an odd and perky little situation on this one. It's an existing recorded parcel of land. It was recorded and actually approved by the planning commission in 1991, March of 1991. And, well, the preliminary plat was approved and the final plat two months later in May. As a part of those approvals, this lot was required to be labeled not to be used as a building site in order for, to allow for the extension of Point Clear Drive further eastward at some point in the future. It would provide a secondary entrance and exit from the Living Springs neighborhood, which currently does only have one way in and out. The other end of Point Clear Drive, as well as Moore Hill Avenue, are stubbed to adjoining vacant properties. Basically, what they have asked for is for the planning commission to amend the final plat approval from May of 1991, to remove that required notation and allow for this lot to be built. As we, we've looked at it, it's, it never, I mean, from, it's been there. I've known about this for a long time and it's never made sense from one, from the standpoint of the ability for this road to ever, to be extended would be, make it very odd and strange. You would come down to a cul-de-sac and then you kind of make a left turn and then you keep going. It was, for whatever, if they wanted it extended, it probably should have been stubbed to the property line instead of having, making it a cul-de-sac, so. So anyway, but that was the thinking at the time and the planning commission's time wanted that. The property to the east that it could potentially tie to, there's some floodplain on it and it's, it's not, it's had houses, there's a couple houses over there, or one house on there at least. And so it, the build, or the, the ability or the possibility of being extended into that property for development is probably pretty limited as well, so. Anyway, so that's, that is the request. It's a pretty straightforward plat as far as that goes. It's really just remove, amending the plat to, to remove that comment. And we would recommend approval.
So would that make this a buildable lot?
It would make it a buildable lot, yes.
Even with the floodplain?
Yes.
Proximity?
They've got plenty of room in front of that floodplain to be able to build.
I was actually surprised that there was even a vacant lot over there. I, I just thought it was done, yeah. Okay. And then if I'm hearing you correctly, the, to leave it as, with a, any type of stub potential is really worthless.
Well, I just, I just don't know how it would, it would just be an odd. You go down to a cul-de-sac and again, you kind of make this weird kind of odd angle of left turn and then you go into a, I mean, you're getting pretty close to the creek at that point. It's just, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Okay. So it doesn't make sense versus worthless?
Right.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments?
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Okay, now we're on to site plans. Our first item is Veterans Landing, 10259 Old Nashville Highway. Owner/Developer HPG Companies.
This is a site plan for Veterans Landing. It's south of Screw Valley Drive, north of Lennox of Smyrna subdivision. This development includes 43 townhomes with single access point onto Old Nashville Highway. This, this property is Zoned PRD and was approved for rezoning from C4 to PRD September of '22. Staff received a PRD revision request back in March of this year to reduce the number of units from 46 to 43 units to kind of shift things around. It's a tough site to develop, so as a result, they've requested at that time to revise it minorly. And this was what they presented to staff and staff approved their changes, modifications as a staff administrative rezoning, more or less, or a adjustment to the PRD. So this plan that they presented to us tonight is part of those revisions that they've presented to staff back in March of this year. Score footage of vehicle use here for the site is .73 acres. Landscape requirements of 3,198 square feet and they're proposing for 5,689 square feet. Total parking required of 108 spaces. And they're showing for 86 driveway spaces and 22 guest spaces, which does get you to the required amount. They do also have car parking for garages as well. That's not included in this overall proposed number, just the driveway and guest spaces. So in theory, it does exceed the overall requirement of the 108 spaces. As a townhome development, they're not required to have any handicap parking spaces and they're not showing for any. For the landscape plan, the zoning ordinance does require a Type C landscape buffer along the southwestern property line adjacent to the single-family residences of the Lennox subdivision. The Eppken has requested a deviation from the Type C buffer with a six-foot wide landscape buffer consisting of a mixture of evergreen trees and primarily shrubbery. In addition, they've also shown a six-foot tall wooden privacy fence. A Type B landscape buffer is required along the western property line abutting the church and is shown accordingly. Streetscaping is shown along Old Nashville Highway. Architecture elevations show both sides and rear elevations to have entirely fiber cement board siding. The front elevations show the entire first floor to be clad in brick with the second floor entirely fiber cement board. Standard comments one through six would all remain at this time. We had a couple staff comments. Staff comment one's regarding the street names within the development to be added to the site plan. They did not have E91 approval for those, for that name at this time. So we just ask it whenever they do receive approval to show it on the site plan. So comment one will remain. Comment two is regarding the Type C landscape buffer. So traditionally, a Type C landscape buffer does, is 15 foot wide and offsetting evergreen shrubs and trees. So with the way the site's designed, six foot wide is all they have. So they've condensed as much as they can with the design they're showing and then have added the wooden privacy fence to beef up the landscaping, if you will. So more or less, that is what they're requesting a deviation for from what the ordinance would traditionally require. Comment number three is regarding, it's Public Works comment and that is something that Public Works can take a look at when they get to the grading and drainage plant's middle comment, or middle stage. So comment three will remain. Comment four is a construction and utilities plan that can be caught at that time. So kind of three, four, five, six, five and six is also CUDs, so those remain at this time. So really, the only comment we have to go over is comment number two regarding the landscape buffers and how y'all want to administer that. So with that, staff recommend approval.
In general, I've never seen a wooden privacy fence that's really ever worked. It's rot, decay, movement, bowing. I've just, do we have any other alternatives that might be a possibility with that or for that?
The wooden fences what we received in the plans. We have not asked for an alternative. I'm sure we can ask for an alternative, but that was just what we received as part of the request.
We've required vinyl siding or vinyl fences in the past, the white vinyl, certainly.
Would that be an acceptable alternative?
I mean, I think that would, it would, as long as it's maintained, you know, as long as.
Who would maintain that?
It would be the, well, HOA.
This, I remember seeing this, we, we required a third-party HOA, did we not?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
There, there are fences, I will say, just, just from observation. Within Lennox, they have six-foot wooden fences along all those lots already, but that's on their side.
Are those owned by the individual homeowners or is that something Lennox did?
I would assume they're individual homeowners because that's not a common open space here.
Okay.
That, and that's, that, they do exist, the fence does exist there. Again, that's something that's on their side. If you were looking for a buffer, it would really be the responsibility of this development to provide a buffer of whatever that ends up being, so.
So it would be on the western? On the backside of this property?
Yes.
And that's only a six-foot instead of the required 15?
It's six-foot between the road and the property line. You, you actually have enough room probably to do a buffer on that, kind of that southwestern corner, I guess, next to that, I think it's lot, unit 28 or whatever. Because that's, yeah, where that road's not at, you know, you probably have enough room there. So there's a couple houses there. Then the other four or five houses, he's only got six feet of it. And this is what was shown on the PUD when it was approved. This is, we, we probably should have talked about this at the PUD level, because it was shown there.
Did we, with the original, did we approve it with a wooden fence?
We didn't approve it with a wooden fence. We didn't, we actually didn't have, the buffer strip wasn't shown of any kind there.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So we, we need to fix this?
We need to fix it in some manner, yeah.
So you are saying around lot 28 that they could do the 15-foot there, correct?
I think you could do it there and you probably, I mean, at the end of the road there, you know, there's.
Are, when you're saying the end of the road, where we're showing dog park?
Where the dog park and that area is, you probably could put cats in there.
We could get the 15-foot buffers there.
Yeah.
So we're mainly looking at the?
Kind of like, there's about, what, four houses? Four, maybe a portion, part of four, four and a half houses that, and within Lennox, that back up to this, where there's only a smaller width.
A, a white fence, even a white vinyl is going to stand out more so than blending in, especially if you have shrubs in there to blend in with everything else around it. So have to look at the neighbors too back there.
I guess I'm just concerned with the maintenance and upkeep.
Yes, oh, absolutely. Yeah.
They're falling all over town.
Yeah, the vinyl fence can fall too.
Yeah.
But at least they'll look a lot better before they do.
So Kevin, the request is a deviation from the Type C buffer. And then with a six-foot wide landscape buffer consisting of a mixture of evergreen trees and primarily shrubbery, in addition to a six-foot tall wooden privacy, and doing away with this Type C buffer, is that the way I'm reading that?
Yeah, and, and lieu of the landscaping that would be required in, in that buffer. They just have some landscaping, but primarily using a fence really as the buffer.
I mean, this is coming in on the entire neighborhood in certain, a couple different places. And I, I'll go on record, I didn't support this when it came through, but it's the site plan now. And that's beside the point, it's, it's been approved, but. I just kind of hate getting away from what we usually require.
Other questions or comments?
Kevin, is staff comfortable with, if we went six-foot plus a privacy fence?
I mean, I would prefer a full normal buffer.
Right.
I, I guess I feel a little differently just simply because it's, we didn't, we didn't point that as out when it came to you for zoning purposes, you know. We, we, we as the staff probably missed something there, you know?
Okay.
So that's, that's where I guess I go a little bit, feel a little bit differently, I guess, but.
So we, we do feel that we can get the 15 around lot 28 and then around the dog park? And it's the, kind of the six in between there, which would affect, looks like about four houses?
About four houses.
Would, is staff, you know, I guess for me, I'm, I'm more, if we're going to do something, I'm more comfortable with a vinyl fence because I think we're going to.
I think, I think so too.
I think there's going to be more longevity out of it.
I, I would agree with that. And I, and I think, I think we probably, with or without the fence, I think we need to get the, the required landscape to where we can.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other discussion? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to reject.
Okay, I have a motion to.
Due to the landscaping concern.
Okay, I have a motion to design.
To deny.
I'm sorry, to deny. Based upon the landscape buffer not meeting the Type C that's required.
I'm sorry, to deny based upon the landscape buffer not meeting the Type C that's required. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a second to deny based upon not having the proper landscape buffer. Further discussion? All those in favor of denying signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Me, no. Okay, so this motion is denied. Okay, next, we have the Villas of Stewart's Borough, Phase 2, 10542 Old Nashville Highway. Owner developer Finyara Homes Company.
Yeah, so this is a site plan for Phase 2 for the Villas of Stewart's Borough. This is 31 townhome development adjacent to Phase 1. It's currently under construction at this time. Both phases share a single entrance, Longfell Lane off of Old Nashville Highway. Each townhouse would be two stories with three bedrooms and include a single-car garage with a two-vehicle wide driveway. Per the approved PRD, each unit is to have 1700 square feet of living area. These plans are consistent with the approved PRD. Currently, there are two parcels where the development is proposed to be located, and the parcels will require a plat to combine those lots prior to issuance of building permits. Vehicle use area for the site is .80 acres, and that does require 3,500 square foot of landscaping. Applicants showing for 14,000 square feet. Total park required of 62 spaces, and they're showing for 62 driveway spaces and 40 guest spaces. Handicap parking space is not required because it is a townhome development, but they're showing for two around the amenity areas. The landscape plan shows a Type C landscape buffer along the northern and eastern property lines adjoining single-family residential properties. Trees and shrubs are supposed to be planted along Old Nashville Highway and in landscape alleys throughout the site. Architecture elevations show the front elevations to have brick on the first level with different design fiber cement siding on the second level. Both side elevations and rear elevations show entirely fiber cement siding, and the proposed elevations are consistent with the approved PRD. Standard comments one through seven will all remain at this time, and staff comment one regard the plat to combine those lots prior to issuance of the building permit. Comment two, we asked them to add an additional fire hydrant to nearby unit 39. They have done so, so comment two can be removed. Comment three and four are both CUD comments and will remain. And with that, staff to recommend approval.
This is consistent with what we saw in preliminary, correct?
On the PRD zoning, yes.
Yeah.
Because you saw last month or two months ago, the request to deviate from that 1700 square foot, and that was denied, so they're back meeting. The requirements are set forth previously.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure. Kevin, help me remember, was this done before we put in our new setback regulations?
New setbacks and the parting requirements and all those things, yes.
When we originally talked about this and we looked at the phase at Phase 2 or yeah, this Phase 2, some of the parking that we that was added here helped out with parking as far as Phase 1, correct?
Yes.
Other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
To approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Further discussion? Kevin, this is all the way it was proposed before, correct?
It is, except because of the amendment that was turned down, ended up, I think there's four less units than it is as far as the layout and everything else is the same.
I'm glad we moved forward with new parking rigs. I know this was already approved the old way. I have a little heartburn about that, but it is what it is. It got approved a while back. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Site plan is approved. We're on to the August bond review report.
And we've got several tonight, so I'll kind of go through these all of them. First one, Buckingham Place, Section 1, Phase 2. This is the end of the maintenance period. Developers indicated everything is complete. The inspectors are telling me primarily public works inspectors are saying they're not complete, so there's still a few things to clean up on here. So we would we would recommend it is in the period. We're fine releasing it once if once things get completed. If they don't get done by the expiration date, which is only a couple of weeks, we would need to extend that one. Hidden Hills, Section 6, Phase 1. This is one we've only had a year. There're only about a third built out here, so we would recommend a one-year extension. Woodcrest, Section 3, kind of in the same boat as Buckingham, 1, Phase 2. Again, near really the end of the maintenance period, or need some ass built and some other things cleaned up. Again, we can release it if they get done, but otherwise, we would need to extend it six months. Rooker's Bend, Section 1, Phase 1. This is one we've had for a while, and we're but and the developer did not return my contact. I tried to contact him, didn't hear back from him. We would recommend an extension on this one to try to get that finished up, but it is one we've had for a while, so. I need to I'll try and follow up with him again to see if I can get.
Cost for what's left to do here on that?
I don't think we have an idea for the cost. My gut is it's definitely more than what we have in the bond.
Is there any way you guys can give it get us an estimate?
Okay.
And I'm more comfortable talking about it in three months, given.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Buckingham Hills, this is one where we have, it's two different developers, kind of partners, and we got bonds from both. They are they are built out now there. They are they did get some work done, but there is still some items to be completed. So we would recommend an extension there. Hawk Point 24 subdivision, this is actually a development that's actually in Laverne, but it's sewered by the town, so we have a bond, a sewer bond with them. And so there's a couple of things that still need to be cleaned up. The utilities department did recommend just reducing that to $10,000 and extending it one year as the maintenance bond. Everything's completed, other than some cleanup items and the ass builds. Woodmont, Section 6C, everything has now been completed on that in the intervening time since this was done, and we can release that one, so. Cedar Hills, Section 1, Phase 1 and 2. That developer did indicate they were going, should everything should have been completed either this week or last week. So if they have done that, then we can release that one as we are at the end of the maintenance period. The public works and utilities have to confirm all that, but we may be able to release that one, extend it if we they're not done, but hopefully we'll be able to release that one. Westover, Phase 1B, everything's done. We can begin the maintenance period on that one, so reduce that one to 10,000 and go extend it one year as the maintenance bond. Blakeney, Section 3, Phase 1. This one's still, we've only had it a year, and it's only about 15% built out, so we would recommend a one-year extension at the same amount. Blakeney, Section 2, Phase 3. They were last week were they said they were replacing that final topping, so if that was completed, and they've got surely some time still before the expiration date, if they get that done, we can reduce it to 10,000 and extend it one year as the maintenance bond. Otherwise, extend six months at the current amount. Blakeney, Section 2, Phase 2 is in the same situation, so make the same recommendation for that. Amberton, Section 4, they are, home construction is scheduled to be completed in November, and they plan to complete the paving and punch list in December. So we would recommend an extension to six months on that one to let them get that done. And then Sundale, Section 2, they did request an extension on that one. We've had that one a couple of years, so would only recommend a six-month extension there. They do have a few lots to finish up there. And then Buckingham Place, Section 3, they do have the paving scheduled on this. If they're able to get that done prior to the expiration date, we can reduce that one to 10,000 and extend it as the maintenance bond. Otherwise, we would just extend it at the current amount, six months. So that is the bond report.
Okay, any questions to Kevin concerning the bond report? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the bond review report.
I have a motion to approve the bond review report. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor of approving the August bond review report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The bond review report from August is approved. Staff comments or other business?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Catherine?
No.
Counselor? Mr. Spearmint?
No, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure. All right. Anything from the commission? Extend adjourned.